It is seven o'clock this evening, time to call to order. The Williams County Board of County Commissioners, we'd like to open the session at this point. We have two members that are absent tonight that had called me. Commissioner Ford is out of town on business. And also, we're missing Commissioner Davis tonight, who's also out town on company business. As we open this session tonight, which is the first session of the county commission in 2008, as a part of our devotional tonight and our invocation, I wanted to read to you something that crossed my desk the last few days that really caused me to do some thinking and some contemplation about some things. You've probably seen this before, but I wanted to use this to open the session tonight. The title of this little soliloquy is "Who Packed Your Parachute?" Sometimes in the daily challenges that life gives us, we miss what is really important. We may fail to say hello, or please, or thank you, or congratulate someone on something wonderful that has happened, fail to give a compliment, or just fail to do something nice for no reason at all. Charles Plum, a U.S. Naval Academy graduate, was a jet pilot in Vietnam. After seventy-five combat missions, his plane was destroyed by a surface-to-air missile, and Plum ejected and parachuted into enemy hands. He was captured, he spent six years in communist Vietnamese prison, but he survived the ordeal, and he now travels across the country lecturing on what he learned from that experience. One day, Plum and his wife were sitting in a restaurant, and a man from another table walked up and said, "You're Plum. You flew jet fighters in Vietnam from the aircraft carrier Kitty Hawk. You were shot down." Plum said, "How in the world did you know that?" "I packed your parachute," the man replied. Plum gasped in surprise and gratitude. The man pumped his hand and said, "I guess it worked." Plum assured him, "Sure did. If your chute hadn't worked, I wouldn't be here today." Plum couldn't sleep that night, thinking about the man. Plum says, "I kept wondering what he might have looked like in a Navy uniform, a white hat, a bib in the back, and bell-bottom trousers. I wonder how many times I might have seen him and not even said, 'Good morning,' or 'How are you,' or anything else." Because, you see, I was a fighter pilot, and he was just a sailor. Plum thought of the many hours the sailor had spent on a long wooden table in the bowels of the ship, carefully weaving the shrouds and folding the silks of each chute, holding in his hands each time the fate of someone that he didn't even know. Now, as Plum lectures across this great country, he now asks his audience, "Who's packing your parachute?" Everyone has someone who provides what they need to make it through the day. His experience reminds us all to prepare ourselves to whatever storms lie ahead, and it's my plea to each of you, as you go through this week, this month, and this year, that you recognize the people that pack your parachute. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're so thankful for life and for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. Help us, Father, to always realize, as great as we think we might be, that we are only a small part of your universe, and we operate with you as the great Maker and the mighty Master of the entire universe. Bless us, we pray, our Father, through this year. Bless this county commission as we work and serve together. And help us, Father, always to look to you for guidance, and always and forever remember those that pack our parachute. In Christ's dear name we pray, and amen. Would you please stand forward. Our pledge to the flag, Commissioner Bain will lead us.
Pledge the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, please. Anderson, if you would officially call the roll, or if everybody's present.
We have twenty-two present.
Press the yes button, so we can have recorded vote. Push your white button for the present. Twenty-two of us here. We're missing Commissioner Ford and Commissioner Davis. Roll call is there. Approval of minutes of the regular November tenth county commission meeting. I'll entertain a motion that we accept. Motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Smith. We approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Introduction and acceptance of the highway commission minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Mills, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Citizens' communication. There are no requests to speak, so we'll go into communications and messages. Again, a couple of items. Sergeant at arms tonight is Lynn Sutton. Sheriff Jeff Long is here as well. Want to thank him for being here. Ask you to cooperate with us and help us. If you have a pager and a cellphone, please turn it off or have it on silence, so as not to interrupt our meeting this evening. We have a late-file resolution, 10915. This resolution was late filed. It was attached and is in your agenda, and the information is prepared there for you. So, as it is a late-file resolution, I must ask, are there any objections to hearing late-file resolution 10915? I see no objections, so we'll add that or leave that on the agenda at the appropriate place. Moving on to communications and messages, proclamations declaring January 2009 as official radon action month. The county mayor, Rogers Anderson.
Mr. Chairman and county members, thank you for the opportunity to proclaim this as official radon action month. I'm not going to read the proclamation. This was a request by the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation of the United States Environment.
And the EPA, of supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon. You can read the information in there. Excuse me. But this month has been the month that has been designated all throughout the state and throughout the nation in encouraging people to have their homes checked for radon, and at the same time, bring attention to the fact that this is the second-largest cancer-killing agent that we have now in our environment.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from county offices, department heads have sent out a report. I want to thank the CVB for including their first report that's there. Also, at this time, we'll call you back up, Mayor, to have our financial report and other information that you'd like to bring us, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me have David just come on up here and give us the financial information of the county.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have your normal monthly reports that we'll go over briefly, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those. Apologize that some of these are a little late, they were not in your packet, but we were trying to get as much up-to-date information as we could, and we just got the records for the schools and for the county general closed today for December, so we were able to get you that six-month report for the county commission budget report for December 31st. Everything appears to be fairly normal at a six-month period. We are starting to see the revenue come in from property taxes. Just a quick note, if you look back at November, the revenue for the county general fund was $11 million, and now we're at $28 million. On the schools, last month, we were at $53 million, now it's $97 million. So, we are starting to see those property tax come in, and we should have a good month for January and February. And in fact, Mr. Davis indicated that we're right on target or just a little bit ahead of where we were last year. So, nothing really unusual in those reports tonight. Secondly, we have the October and November report from the Cool Springs Marriott Conference Center. For the month of October, we received a check for a little over $38,000, and for the month of November, a little over $17,000. So, continuing to have some good months there, and you usually expect a little slowdown December, January, but hopefully, we won't see much of a drop there. Then the reports that we've been watching very closely all year long, our privileged tax reports for November, I think we reported at some of our committee meetings. If you look at just the schools figure for November, for the month, was a little over $82,000. That's the lowest collection of school privileged tax on record since we began in about 1987. For December, we were up to $95,000. Not a big jump, not a lot of change, but I would certainly hope that would be the start of a trend. Then we do have the graphs that we've been providing for you the last few months that shows the total privileged tax, the top collected, under the old privileged tax, and then at the bottom, the new adequate schools, facilities tax that we just started July a year ago. So, it gives you a visual of those and how they're tracking. Mr. Chairman, any questions on those? And then I was going to give you a brief summary of the budget guidelines for '09-10.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? See none. Proceed, sir.
Monday night's budget committee meeting, a recommendation was made, and the budget committee unanimously passed guidelines for the '09-10 budget year. The recommendation that was passed, first time in over twenty years, recommendation of a zero salary increase for all county employees. Not a measure certainly that we wanted to do, but we feel like it's necessary at this time. The good news is, there are no plans at this time for any reduction in our workforce, and our benefits are still there and healthy for our county employees, and we will try to maintain those at a level that'll be a good benefit for employees. The operating budget, we've asked all departments to reduce the operation part of their budget by ten percent. That was done this year on kind of a volunteer basis. The mayor had asked all departments to try to come up with that reduction, but this will actually be a book reduction in the budget when it's approved of ten percent. We're recommending, on the county general's side, no new positions. We realize that when you get into schools, if enrollment increases, there will have to be new positions for classroom teachers. Travel, the same recommendation we had last year on the county general, any out-of-state travel or overnight travel will be approved by the county mayor by those departments that are under his direct control. Another item that's a little new for us this year, we're recommending that in the capital expenditures for each department, that we will not put any capital in those various departments. This is a change from years past, recommending no new vehicles. We're going to take the funds that would have been used in each department for computers and furniture and fixtures. We will remove approximately $600,000 from those lines, and then we will put $150,000 to $200,000 back in under the purchasing budget, and we will control those purchases through my office. And if computers or furniture break down and need to be repaired or replaced, we will monitor that, but no new equipment, just for the sake of new equipment. And then finally, something primarily for the nonprofit agencies, because we do have people come in every year, but it's easier if we make this recommendation upfront, and that is that there will be no consideration of new funding requests for '09-10. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman on the budget guidelines? Those were approved of the budget committee, five, four, zero, again. So, any questions? See none. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Yes, sir.
Williamson County Schools, Dr. David Heath.
I was asked by Commissioner Naren this morning to talk a little bit about what we are trying to do to meet some of the same things Mr. Coleman just talked about, and I gave Diane some copies, just so you could have something in front of you. But the first page is just a summary of some facts that most educators don't know, just some information. I'm not going to go through all that, but it talks about some of the situations that are occurring this year at the state from which some of our funding comes, and the fact that there are a lot of unknowns that we know we're going to face during this fiscal year preparation for the budget, because there are legislation being considered, there are a number of things that are being considered, and none of them, we know what the outcome's going to be. So, as we begin the budget process, because some of those could have positive or negative impacts, then we will be having to have a budget that's somewhat fluid. On the backside, or page two, there were the same information, but some of them are duplexed and others are two pages, is the specific things that I talked to our principals about last Wednesday and our central office staff on Tuesday morning, about things we can do both this year and for next year. We too have stopped our out-of-state or overnight conference travel. There were some things that were in the mill that we couldn't stop, because we tried all of them to get money back, but if we couldn't get money back, then there are a few things that are going. But we have applied for and gotten refunds on a significant number of those. No purchase of materials not directly needed for instruction. We have some monies, and not a lot of money, but schools need things to carry out the curriculum, and certainly, we want them to have them. We just ask them to look at purchase orders that they might have in the pipeline now, or things that they might submit throughout the rest of this year, and see if they were necessary, or were there things that would just be nice to have. We're not buying any new equipment either, or furniture, other than for broken furniture. We did have quite a few requisitions that we canceled this week. We will certainly replace things that break and can't be repaired, but there are, there were quite a bit, quite a few things that we still had orders for that schools had not spent. We are looking at, we're not buying any new software or online applications, except for those things that we have to, or have already in the pipeline to purchase because of, for example, we have a new student information management system, because the one we previously had was sold to a different company, and there's some changes there that were budgeted, and that's well on the way to replacing that. But, but again, elective kinds of software, we're not purchasing. And then, we're looking at any vacant position other than in the classroom to see if we really need it for the rest of the year. Certainly, classroom positions, we will be replacing, but a position that might be a secretary, or teacher's aide, or central office position, if those become vacant, then we will look at each one of those individually. We will be talking to principals again. We've done a lot of energy conservation studies in the last few days, and we're going to be talking to them. These are some of the things we said we would consider implementing. Certainly, if you go by school buildings at night and in the afternoon, you see every light in the building on. We've talked to them about energy conservation from their end, but we're also talking to custodial people about the same thing. The use of small appliances in classrooms, we haven't made a decision, but we've told them those things to consider. Each teacher having a coffee pot, or not each teacher, but a number of teachers, and small refrigerators or regular-sized refrigerators in their classroom. But you can see that list. I don't need to go through all of those, because they're not, those haven't been determined yet. We, we just ask principals to talk to their staff about what they could do and make some recommendations back on things where we might save money and energy. We've frozen the rehire of positions for next year that become vacant because a person retires, only because, while we don't anticipate that we would lose any positions, the fact is that eighty percent of our staff is, or a little more than eighty percent, is personnel, and that possibility does exist. We don't know a lot of things about funding at this point. So, we've said, rather than fill positions with new people for somebody who's not retiring until the end of the school year, and filling it now for next August, let's hold off on those, except for hard-to-fill positions. If we've got one in chemistry, then certainly. We don't have enough chemistry teachers to fill our needs, so we will go ahead and fill the hard-to-fill, but those where we generally have plenty of applicants, we will hold off on those. And the next two items are about PTO funded, just saying that, you know, the funds that you generate at a little school are your funds suspended as you see fit. We're not trying to look at those, but we do ask them. We said, you know, in, in thinking about the future, you probably do ought to look at, well, what would I do if I didn't get the same level of funding for, for extra materials? Would I rather use some PTO money for that, or to, to buy something that might not provide me the same need as this does? Then, in looking at next year's budget, these are some of the guidelines we gave them, and they're coming up with some more ways, programs perhaps, that we're not getting as much benefit, or anything that they see, and we'll discuss that again at our meeting next week. But no new programs or special courses. Now, special course is one that, the reason for that is, it's not one that's state-approved. We have to get it approved, and it's usually because a teacher wants it for a small group of kids, and we have to buy new textbooks for it, a whole bunch of expenses tied with it. So, we're not going to start any brand-new courses next year of that type. We'll still offer the ones that, that currently exist, as long as there's enough students to merit enrollment. We're looking at, this year's the year of science adoption, and we're going to adopt a text, but we're going to look at whether or not the state curriculum has changed enough to require that we purchase a text. If not, we'll delay purchasing textbooks for grade levels or courses until a later time. We're budgeting minimally for travel to conferences in next year's budget. New equipment, furniture, the same thing. And I ask them to look, and this is something about growth, when we looked at our figures for growth, quite honestly, we're not seeing much change. I know that, that the economy is down, but the reality is that either families have small children that already live here that's starting at school. We gained 144 students more since the first day of school than as of this past week. We had a couple of schools that, one school gained 33 students, another school got 25 new students the first day we came back in January, in one school and one grade level, which required us to hire teachers. So, the one factor that we also looked at was the impact that the economy might have on private schools and homeschool students returning to public schools. We looked at all of last year, meaning we looked from, from the time schools started this year to the beginning of the previous year. There were 481 students. We have 435 already this semester, knowing that most of those changes that take place won't take place until the end of the school year, because there are contracts of those. So, anyway, that concludes my report. Those are the things that we're doing. There are probably some misinformation out there, just because it's new and, and it hasn't been disseminated.
Any questions, follow-up questions of Dr. Heath? He's very kind to bring this report tonight, because there have been several things reported, and I just wanted the entire commission to hear it directly from Dr. Heath. Any questions or follow-up on what he's doing and what he's done as it relates to this issue? Seen anything else, Dr. Heath? Is that it?
No, that's it.
Thanks, sir. Any other committee wishing to make a report? They have received these reports in our various packets. Any questions of, of any of the department heads as it relates to the issue that's here? Commissioner Hayes, please.
Yes, I just want to join you in thanking our convention visitors bureau for their report. I hope you all read that in your packet. But also, I wanted to bring to your attention that you're invited to a gathering tomorrow morning at 10, 10 till 11, at the factory on the main entranceway at the factory, for a special announcement. That's tomorrow at between 10 and 11. Public is invited. We'd love for you to attend.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any, anything else to report at this time? I see none. Moving on to the elections and appointments, county mayor's appointment for the Stormwater Appeals Board, a two-year term expiring one of eleven. Building contractor representative, John Minton. Nomination, John Minton. Engineering representative, Rick Shuff. Nomination, Rick Shuff. Agricultural representative, John Kinney. Nomination, John Kinney. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Wilson, the second. At this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Hester, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to mention that there was in your, at your place today, a mention of an engineer, Mr. Russell Pittsner, and I asked for this hard copy to be presented. I'd like to honor Mr. Pittsner, because he wishes to be a public servant, and I know we all appreciate that very much. And this hard copy resume is simply for your information and for future references and considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have this on the board, Linda. All in favor of the Stormwater Appeals nomination, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. County Commission appointments, adjustments, and appeals board, two-year terms expiring January 13th of 2013. Architect representative, Al Thomas. Nomination, Al Thomas. Engineer representative, Glenn Adams. Nomination, Glenn Adams. Building industry representative, Ron Crutcher. Nomination, Ron Crutcher. Commissioner Cook, the motion. Commissioner Smith, the second. Discussion. Commissioner Barnwell, please. It's actually a two-year term expiring 111 versus 113. I think it should be 111, shouldn't it?
I think they're four-year terms.
Are they four-year terms?
Everybody's got their rules. A new rules book.
Look, I'll have council check that force. You know where it is?
Everybody got a new rules book.
Yeah, everybody has a new rules book. Four-year terms, so two, two-year terms expiring.
Should be four-year.
Should be four-year terms expiring one, 2013. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, for pointing out that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Agriculture Committee, two-year term expiring one of 2011. Farm position, Ralph Meacham. Nomination, Ralph Meacham. Farm woman position, Cherry Jackson. Nomination, Cherry Jackson. County Commissioner, Jack Walton. Nomination, Lou Green. Commissioner Hancock, the motion. Commissioner Hayes, the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Notaries, you've received this list of approvals, new and renewals, in the packet, and that has been presented to us for approval. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Langston. Approval on the notaries? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Consent agenda. There are three items that are on the consent agenda. If you would review those, please. Three resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to accept. The consent agendas are second. Commissioner Bain, the motion. Commissioner Shaw, the Commissioner Chauvin, the second, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda? I see none. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote, record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution, adopting the consent agenda is unanimous. Moving on to appropriations. Resolution number one nine oh, one oh nine four. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eight-nine Williamson County Sheriff's Office budget by a hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues to come from contributions. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Barnwell. Committee reports.
Law enforcement, seven, five, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a donation that's being made to the county, to the sheriff's office, to be spent in the DARE crime prevention program.
Very good. Other questions? I see none. One oh nine four is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number one oh nine seven. Resolution approving a grant between the state of Tennessee and Williamson County for the provision of ride-sharing, for an amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Langston. Budget Committee report?
Four, five, zero against.
Let's see. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
What it is, is the state just sends some money to help with the ride-sharing in Williamson County.
As I understand it, this is just a continuation of what they've done in the past.
Right.
Any questions? See none. One oh nine seven is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote, record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no. Resolution number one oh nine eight. Resolution authorizing withdrawal of funds in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, seventy-two cents, from the local government investment pool account maintained for Hunterwood subdivision to reimburse the highway department for road repairs already completed and to authorize continued withdrawal to pay for future road repairs. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Walton. Explanation, Budget Committee report. Commissioner Lynch?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
This is just money where the highway department done some work for this subdivision, and they just paying it back, putting it in the budget, so they can spend it again.
The Highway Commission approved that, five, four, zero against. So, any questions of Commissioner Lynch? Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to thank the highway department. They did a wonderful job out there.
Thank you, sir. One oh nine eight is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Does anybody voted, wishes to vote, record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution one oh nine eleven. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand eight-nine Health Department budget by thirty-seven thousand dollars. Revenues to come from grant through the state of Tennessee. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee report?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please.
This is just some money coming from the state to help the Health Department do their job.
Questions of Commissioner Lynch? I see none. If you're in favor of one oh nine eleven, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-two, yes, and zero, no. Resolution number one oh nine thirteen. A resolution authorizing the issuance of county district school refunding and improvement bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand of Williamson County, Tennessee. Authorizing the renewal, extension, or reissuance of certain outstanding short-term county district school notes, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Mills. Budget Committee report?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
With your permission, I'd like Ms. Coleman to explain this.
Please, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, you have another resolution behind this, and I'll kind of talk in general about both of those, and if any specific questions you have about either one, we'll try to address those. But, basically, this first one is, most of you familiar with the old-term rural school bonds, and that's kind of a new-term school district bonds, but those are those K-through-eight projects, and all of these are projects that have been previously approved throughout the year. If you'll recall, we've kind of been working all fall and now this winter to try to give us the flexibility to go to the market, and we felt like the timing was right. Most of these projects would have been originally borrowed early this fall, but we postponed them and put them off as long as we could. We've also taken some temporary measures in borrowing some short-term notes from banking institutions to get us to this point, and so now we're ready to start positioning to pay those off. So, the projects, Mr. Chairman, are those that were approved in July for the county general and for schools, for roofs and maintenance, air conditioners, things of that nature. The project at Beasley Drive, where we purchased that building, and that is the purchase of the building only. We have no plans at this time for any major renovations until the economic situation changes a little bit. And, of course, the ongoing project of the renovation of the historic courthouse is in this package. And then, four million dollars in parks and rec projects, they were actually approved over a year ago. We did temporary funding, and this would replace that temporary funding. And then, the major item for the schools is the middle school that's being built on Buckner Lane down in Spring Hill. The first portion of that project has already been borrowed, and this is the amount to finish that. Some of this money may not be needed until late in the spring. And then, three-point-eight million, I believe that's correct, that's for the high school land and design, I believe that's correct, for the Spring Hill High School. So... Brentwood High School, I'm sorry. That's the renovation of Brentwood High School. So, these are all projects, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that have been previously approved. Nothing new there. And on the county school district bonds, we are looking at approximately seven-point-three million dollars restructuring rural debt service that would be due this spring. And those of you being in our committee meetings, but I'll go through this again. Again, we're asking for the flexibility on this. These payments could be made this year with funds that we have available. We couldn't make it through this year without this restructuring, but our concern is for next year. If we do this, we would have little or no fund balance remaining to start the oh-nine-ten budget for the rural debt, and so we feel like this restructuring of this debt for this spring is advisable. It's not something we've done in a long time, or maybe never, but it's something we do feel like, again, gives us that flexibility and try to put us in a position to meet the budget next year without a tax increase. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Get the report from Commissioner Greer on the Tax Study Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Coleman on really, well, what we'll do, thirteen-first, thirteen-and-fourteen or sister resolutions? Commissioner Little, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bond restructuring is something new for us, but it's not uncommon thing to do. What does bond council have to say about this?
We've got full approval from them, and also, we've got preliminary approval from the state of Tennessee. Of course, any borrowing that we do has to be approved by the state of Tennessee, and we have preliminary approval from them.
I don't see anything big about it, but it's, you never know what people are looking at long-term here, so it's...
Well, Mr. Commissioner, the flags, I believe, would be raised if this became a normal practice, and it's certainly not a normal practice, and we don't want to make it a normal practice.
Yep, but you're making a good move here and heading off with something to do next year, too, so that's, kudos on your part here, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Little. Other questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. One oh nine thirteen is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. If anybody voted, wish to vote, record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-two, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number one oh nine fourteen. A resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation public improvement in school bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twenty-six million, seven hundred and fifty thousand of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition and proceeds therefrom, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, off-premium, if any, and interest on the bonds, and authorizing the renewal, extension, or reissuance of outstanding short-term obligation notes. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Langston. Budget Committee report?
Four, five, zero against.
Tax Study Committee? Excuse me. Report that again, I'm sorry.
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch, other than what Mr. Coleman has already given us?
If you knew any, I got any questions, Mr. Coleman would be glad to answer them because I can't.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman on Resolution number fourteen? I see none. All in favor of one oh nine fourteen? Press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. Twenty-two, yes.
Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution one oh nine fifteen?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to recognize that Jeff Oldham from Bassberry and Sims is here tonight, our legal counsel for bonds, and was prepared for any questions. I'm glad, I'm sure he's glad there weren't any. But also, we have Sam Cruz from Stevens Incorporated, our financial advisors, and if you would allow him just about three minutes, we think that maybe February, mid-February is going to be the time to take these bonds to market, and he could certainly give you a little better explanation of that than I could, if you'd allow him just a couple of minutes.
Let me think about that for a minute, then. Hurry up, Sam. We're on a roll.
I do tend to talk a lot, so, well, by now, everyone knows, of course, the fourth quarter was a very difficult time in the financial markets, and it did affect government bodies such as yourself trying to access the credit markets. Over the last thirty days or so, the market for high-quality government bonds has improved greatly. For lesser quality, it's still difficult. So, I think, given the supply and demand that's going on in the marketplace, I mean, it looks like you'd be borrowing twenty-year debt at around four and a half percent or so. So, having just been through a period where people couldn't even get money, we think it's a fine time to go ahead and proceed, and it dovetails well with the restructuring as well. So, I think we would probably be looking at a bond sale in mid-February.
Any questions of Sam? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Late-file Resolution, one oh nine fifteen. Resolution transferring ten thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and nine cents from the escrow account for funds in lieu of road improvements for traffic shed number fourteen, LGIP two ninety-four oh sixty-six oh sixty-five, to the city of Nolansville. Commissioner Green and Little? Motion by Commissioners Green and Little. Highway Commission passes five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioners Little and Green?
Yes, I'll do this. Now, this is a request by the city of Nolansville to get those funds that are in that traffic shed fourteen, which are really, have funds in there for our road improvements, and they have annexed this area that is affected by traffic shed fourteen, and they're requesting the monies to install a signal at Rocky Fork and Clovercroft Road, and we desperately need the signal, so I recommend approval.
Very good. Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for my benefit, when a developer or somebody pays funds in lieu of, is that put in an interest-bearing account? And if so, is this ten thousand some-odd dollars included interest, or would the interest go in, say, the general fund?
The account is put, Mr. Chairman, the account is put into an account. This money has, just like the one previously that we did for Hunterwood, and this money that's there, actually, we can't use it anymore because it's inside the city limits of Nolansville.
Right. Well, and I just, I didn't know when these developers and things pay funds in lieu of, is it put in an interest-bearing account? And to me, this is different than Hunterwood. Hunterwood's still in the county, and the highway department did that. When the Nolansville property was funds in lieu of, it was county, and now we're giving the money to Nolansville, which I understand.
That's correct.
That, but I just didn't know if that included the interest that was earned on that money, or is the interest applied to general fund?
General fund.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Little, I assume you're in support of this? Tommy?
Yes, sir.
Yes, but it does include the interest tax. We keep posted, on all accounts, we do that. We have to, we have to show where, how that money was made, but what I was trying to say is, it was put in in the county side. We can no longer use it because it's in the city now, so we've got these funds, and it's a good way to spend it out there to help that intersection.
Okay.
One oh nine fifteen. If there are no more questions, is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Commissioners Hester? Ms. Anderson, record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution one oh nine three. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Bio-Manetics Therapeutics, Inc., for use of equipment. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Tommy Little. Property Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
This will allow us to lease this equipment that's listed on that final page to the group that's using the building now, because Williamson Works has been dissolved, and this equipment was purchased under our grant. The lease meets the terms of those grants, and they will enable the company to use this equipment that's in this room.
Questions of Commissioner Brockman? I see none. One oh nine three is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution one oh nine five. Resolution to reappoint judicial commissioners for Williamson County. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Law Enforcement Committee report?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock, please.
This is just granting the authority for Ann Pendergrass and Ann L. Uwala to act as judicial commissioners for a four-year term.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Hancock? I see none. One oh nine five is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution one oh nine six. Resolution making corrections and assessments for two thousand and six taxes. Commissioner Greer, please.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Hester? Tax Study Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Greer, please.
This is a routine that happens every year that makes corrections in the assessments for previous years.
Any questions of Commissioner Greer on these assessments? The record will reflect that there was a pickup of $603,842.70 due to the work of all the folks working on this, so. Any questions?
I have a correction on the tax study.
Yes, ma'am.
It's three, four, zero against.
Okay. Three, four, zero against, is a report of the Tax Study Committee. Other questions? I see none. If you're in favor of one-oh-nine-six, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution authorizing the county clerk to enter into contract with Yoast, Robertson and Nowack, PLLLC. Commissioner Lynch?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Tax Study Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four, five, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
This is to hire someone to help the county court clerk collect the business taxes. And I'll say one thing, this is one of the best things we ever done, to hire Mr. Yoast for this, because it's been quite successful.
Other questions or comments on one-oh-nine-ten? This requires two-thirds vote. Anticipating unanimous should take care of that, so. All in favor of one-oh-nine-ten, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty-two, yes, and zero, no. Mr. Chairman? Okay, all of you, Diane reminds me, all of you have your complete rules packet of material that's been handed out to you. If you would, find your rules notebook and replace the entire contents with the rules, as well as the appendix that shows all the attachments and the appointments there, too. So replace this insert. It's dated January, last update December 208th, in your rules books for an updated piece of information. Commissioner Lynch?
Chairman, we need to approve the Williamson County road list.
We did. It was a part of the consent agenda.
Oh, is that the only consent? I'm sorry.
It was one of the three, Mr. Lynch, on the.
I didn't realize that, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda. Commissioner Walton, please.
Chairman, I just want to let everybody know the Human Resources Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, January 19th, has been canceled due to lack of business, and there was something on your desk for that.
Again, we want to remind everybody to join the Williamson County CVB tomorrow for, and I'm reading, an exciting press announcement, 10 o'clock, at the factory in the Commons area, so remember that. Anything else before we adjourn? We're setting records tonight, so. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for mentioning that about the Convention Visitors Bureau. I want to echo what Commissioner Hayes said, and Commissioner Cook, and I both serve on that board as well. Please read the report. If you notice, it's called Investors Update. We saw the Marriott report where we're getting money back on that investment. The Convention Visitors Bureau is another opportunity, one of the few opportunities we have to invest in something that actually brings cash money back into the general fund, and it's so critical right now with the hotels that we have and the economic situation that we continue that work. And Mark Shore, our executive director, is here with us tonight, making a point to go by and say hello. Mark, raise your hand. And just visit with him a minute. They're doing a lot of stuff over there, doing great work, and it's something we truly need here in the county, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Floyd Anderson, great to see you out tonight and have you here with us. Always good to see Mr. Floyd out. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Alan? Okay, let's, let's adjourn the meeting because it's a few minutes before eight o'clock, but Commissioner Brockman has the floor.
Okay, I meant to tell everybody at the last meeting, but we have sighted a bald eagle on our property two different times over the last, back in November, no, back in December. And it's remarkable, I'll have to say, I'd never really seen one in the wild. We have a lot of hawks. But he or she was, you know, seemed to be twice the size of a hawk, and once the wingspan, you know, once, once it took flight, you can really understand why it's a national symbol. Amazing and remarkable, so. Williamson County is, is now home to, hopefully, a bald eagle that's going to stay around in the neighborhood.
Very good. See you next month.